救人亦都的救中
Members, we have a quorum and we have reached the appointed hour. Shall we start our meeting? We don't have to confirm the minutes. This is just a special meeting. Since this is a special meeting, we don't have the conventional steps of approving or confirming the minutes. We have two items on the agenda and let us have the officials into the room. The first item is retrofitting franchise buses with selective catalytic reduction devices. There are two papers, CB 1269, 1213, Brigado 1. And Brigado 1 is the administration's paper and Brigado 2 is a background brief prepared by the secretary. I'd like to remind members that if you have any direct or indirect pecuniary interest in respect of any item to be discussed today, please make your declaration according to ROP Section 83A. Please disclose the nature of the interests and please also take into account the voting arrangement in respect of Section 84 of the RAP. May I welcome the government officials today, Mr Christine Lo and the Secretary for Environment, Mr Andrew Lai, Deputy Director of Environmental Protection Department, Mr Mo Kui Chuen, Assistant Director, and Ms Edmund Ho P A S. Or rather, Principal P E P O. Ms Lo, I think members are familiar with this item. In the 2010 Policy Address, it was first raised and after a certain period of time, which was devoted to discussion with the bus companies and some time given to the trial. We've completed the trial in February this year. In the previous terms of the Let's Go, there was the query of whether SCR was practicable. And having completed the trial, we find SCR practicable and in overseas cities. Some of them do have SCRs and they do use SCRs. Since the scheme is ripe, if we get the blessing of this panel, then we can go to the Finance Committee to get the money before summer. And then it still needs time to make the preparations. And by 2015, we can do the fitting. And then by 2016, the fitting will be completed, 1,400 buses will be involved. May I just stop here? In fact, the item was first started in the previous term. Now, the application will not go to the P W S C, it will go straight to the F C. Show hands, please. Three members, six minutes each. Mr Chan Kim Paul.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, in fact, the Subcommittee of Air Quality supported this very strongly. And air pollution does have harmful effects and there is a health bill concern. Other question in respect of paragraph five, the franchise bus fleet. It is said that there are 5,700 franchise buses in Hong Kong as at the end of April 2013 with the completion of the MTR lines. Say by 2015, 2016, will the administration aim at reducing the number of buses? If we can reduce the number of buses, we can do less. I know that you have difficulties in root rationalization, but we see empty, a lot of empty buses in Wenchai. In the long term, is it your strategy to reduce the bus fleet? The second question is on Para 13, operational performance. There are problems, or there were problems during the tests. Now, say, for example, about parts and also adjusting the parts. Now for taxis and PLBs, they do have a lot of problems with the Euro 5 models. I just want to know whether you have overcome the technical problems. And then Para 19, my third question. It is said that the franchise buses will be responsible for the future maintenance and additional cost. What will be the implication on bus fares? How much would that be, 20%, 30% or exactly how much? I will answer the first question and then my colleagues will answer the second and third question. Concerning the reorganization of bus routes, we are working together with the THB. Now, this is the mechanism of the THB. Each year, the THB looks at the routes of the bus companies. In fact, in this year, there is a policy decision. And then we will work with the bus companies and the districts to reorganize the bus routes. The question of the member is whether the bus companies can reduce their bus fleet. I am not capable of answering this question in respect of cutting the size of the bus fleet. But if they reduce the number of buses in the routes, we may be able to reduce emission and that's our concern. They look at each route. In the initial phase, they are just reviewing the routes. There is an annual review and I believe that the efforts will continue. The THB and other panels thus comment on the criteria for reorganizing the bus routes. I think there are two things that are related to roadside emission. First, the reduction of emission by buses. And two, reorganization of bus routes may lead to reduction of buses running in the road, but that is not within our portfolio. Before 2015, there will be buses being replaced and there will be buses retrofitted with SCRs. In the three most busiest districts, the buses running in these places will be Euro 4 or above and that will help to reduce emission. Mr Chan. We hope the government departments will work together to solve the problems. The emphasis is on reducing emission.
Well, I think it would be more effective if we can reduce the number of buses. And I hope that you can talk with other government departments and share a common goal of reducing emission. Now, if bus routes are going to be rationalized, then the bus numbers will be reduced and that's going to solve the problem. And then we have to seek the district council's views on bus routes rationalization. Now, on Mr Chan's three questions. As more rail lines are completed, our understanding is that the Transport Department, before, one year or one and a half years prior to the completion of the railway lines, they will review the public transport services in the district, like the PLBs and buses, and to see whether the number of the fleet needs to be reduced. So the Transport Department is taking care of that. But of course, we welcome the bus companies or the PLB companies can cut down on the number of the fleet so that the pollution problem can be alleviated. Now, on paragraph 13. Last year, we have selected three bus models together with the bus companies to do a trial. Now, in that trial, we'll be honest and there are some technical problems. And that's exactly because of this that we wanted to carry out a trial. SCR is a new technology and if we want to retrofit this new technology in the buses, we would know whether it is compatible. So after this one-year trial, the bus companies overall believe that this is feasible and we can proceed with the next step. Bus companies are also very concerned about the safety and reliability of their services. So if they support and have faith in the service, I think we can recommend it. About the bus fares. In paragraph 16 of the paper, we mentioned that after retrofitting the SCRDs, the bus companies have to absorb the extra operating costs, including the costs for their urea solutions and other maintenance costs. So the two amounts stated here, 1,31 million dollars for KMB and 90 million dollars for CTB. They are not, it is not on an annual basis. And it covers the remaining serviceable life of the buses. It's, we're talking about four to six years. So taking KMB as an example, it has many more buses. So that would amount to around 20 to 30 million dollars per year. And compared to the overall operating costs of a KMB, which is 5 billion dollars annually, so the impact is not that big. Now, as for the impact on the bus fares, and we'll have to consider that when the bus companies apply for fare rises. Mr Sin Chung Kai, the Democratic Party, who supports the funding proposal on the policies and the objectives and that has been laid out in paragraphs 19 to 21 of the paper.
Well, I have a question about the 15% contingency. Is it too much? Why is there such a high percentage? And when will the, or how long will the retrofitting work take? 15%, is it too much? Well, we make a bigger provision here because the program is quite massive in scale. And we now have three models in our trial and we'll add in more models in the retrofitting work. And if bus companies undertake the work, they have to include more buses and they have to carry out a pre-qualification exercise. So I think it's reasonable to provide for a higher percentage of contingency here. Mr Maok, would you want to supplement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is also an important factor apart from pre-qualification trial. And because we are talking about heavy or precious metal in the SCR and because of the fluctuations in the foreign currencies that may affect greatly the amount to be needed. So 15% contingency is reasonable to us. As regards the duration of the retrofitting work, we want to complete it as soon as we can. But I want to say that, well, say for KMB as an example, around 1,100 buses have to be retrofitted. For every bus, we need three or more days. We will complete the work in the end of 2016 and that is around 21 months. So for every month, KMB has to work on 500 buses. For retrofitting on every bus, it takes three days or more. So we think the duration or the time to be taken is reasonable. And even with that timetable, the KMB has to do it, put in a lot of effort to do that because the KMB has to maintain their normal services while they are undertaking the retrofitting work. Now, a follow-up question. Does the EBD or the TD, will they monitor the progress of the retrofitting work? Mr Maok.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will work together with the TD to monitor the progress of the retrofitting work. We are very concerned about it and we hope that it will be implemented according to schedule. The TD will also look or monitor whether the operational performance of the buses will be affected. So we will work closely with TD to monitor them.
Mr Tong Lee Chee. Thank you, Madam Chair. I support the funding proposal. Like the previous two members, we are concerned about the added burden on bus companies because of this work and that may have implications on the bus fares. So I hope that the administration can consider the matter comprehensively and including factors like bus routes rationalization. Madam Chair, in paragraph six, it says here that the service life of a bus is usually 18 years. Is it true that every bus reaches the age of 18 before it is replaced? Can that be changed with the retrofitting work? Can that be changed? That's my first question. Second, the operating costs apart from the maintenance costs. Well, the SCR have to be replaced, say, in five years. Well, the Undersecretary is four to six years and then that will have to be borne by the bus companies. And this time around, we're talking about a funding application of 400 million dollars. And then also, some of the buses may have already retired after the retrofitting work. So I think the administration should plan ahead. And if the costs for the retrofitting work is high, then the public may have to bear the brunt ultimately. Now, as for the timetable, you said that it will be completed by, well, the retrofitting work will be completed by the end of 2016. Now, SCRDs, they may be newly added and we're talking about 1,400 buses. Would it be possible that during the process of the retrofitting work, some new technologies may come up and there may be better SCRDs? Would you be allowing flexibility in that? Or would you be very rigid in saying that, well, the tender has been awarded and we'll just keep to the old technology? So maybe I have, I am overworried or what, I don't know. Well, the Undersecretary, can you please respond?
Madam Chair. Yes, Mr Chair, thank you for your question about the 18 years service life. According to the administration and franchise bus companies agreement, the buses should not be used after they are 18 years old. Now, after the SCRDs have been retrofitted, the maximum lifespan of the bus will not be changed. We are just hoping to use SCRD to reduce emissions. But as we understand from the bus companies and the TDs, although we have this 18 years rule, however, when buses reach a certain age and then the maintenance costs are getting too high, then they will be replaced before they are 18 years old. But nevertheless, the maximum lifespan is 18 years. Secondly, the SCRDs' service life, around five years. And Mr Chair is concerned about after the SCRDs' life has expired, would the bus companies be spending a lot of money to replace the SCRDs? That wouldn't be a difficulty. We are now spending 400 million dollars to retrofit SCRDs. Now, for Euro 2 buses, they will retire in 2019. And we are completing the retrofitting work in 2016. So normally, when the Euro 2 buses' life expires in 2019, then the SCRDs' life also expire at the same time. Now, for Euro 3 buses, they will serve until 2026. And then, well, the SCRDs for those buses may have to be replaced, but then the number of those buses will be smaller. Now, for the technology, on the technology side, of course, technology improves day after day. And the SCRD technology has been here for a few years already. But in the last couple of years, the technology is getting more mature and it has been put into real application by buses overseas. So we think that the time is right for us to discuss with the bus companies to adopt this technology. We don't rule out that new technology will come out, but I think we should seize the opportunity to retrofit the Euro 2 and 3 buses, which don't have very long lifespans. And if we don't seize the opportunity and then wait for newer technologies to come out, then we might, well, we still take time. It will take time for us to do trials and we'll have to wait a longer time. And then that won't be good enough. So now that we know that the technology is good enough, so we think we should proceed with it. Now, Madam Chair, I know that I still have some time left. Well, no, now, you don't have much time. Four members are on the queue. Mr Albert Chan, Kowai Kung, Tan Karpiu and Tong Lee Ho. We'll have to end the discussion of this agenda item at 45. And I have a question myself. So I'll shorten your time to five minutes. Mr Albert Chan, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Basically, the technology can cut down the pollutants like RSB. I should support it in principle. But then it takes 400 million dollars. And are there any alternative solutions which can help improve air quality? Bus, well, for bus routes rationalization, the problem is bus fares and how to mobilize the buses effectively. I've talked to the Transport Department for a long time. Now, if the arrangement like that in the Bus-Bus Interchange at Shing Moon Tunnel can be made, then that would be good and that would benefit the overall operation of the buses. Now, the Transport Department has refused to make an arrangement at Ching Ma Bridge because of costs. Now, if we put the 400 million dollars into subsidizing the bus fares in relation to the interchange arrangements, then that might even work better. I'm not sure that this is the best option, spending 400 million dollars on the retrofitting work. The paper also says that after the retrofitting exercise, fuel consumption may rise by 3 to 4% and that would also create more pollution. Now, 1,000 buses more will be retrofitted with SCRDs and then new pollution problems may arise.
Well, my concern is that there may be explosions and then the bus may be on fire. So earlier, some time ago, in the mainland, there were electric buses which were on fire and somebody nearly got killed. We need to deal with this very carefully. And I'm not convinced that, I'm not convinced by your proposal because it's not cause-effective. I'm not convinced that this 400 million dollars have been well spent. Ms Lai.
I agree with Mr Chan on safety. It's exactly because we are concerned about the retrofitting of SCR devices and whether such retrofitting will ensure safety operation of buses. We will have a round of pre-qualification and get the contractors to fit the SCRDs to six models of buses for a year before there is any large-scale retrofitting. Now, we need to do it the other way around. The contractors should try to convince us that their technology is workable. We have the subjective expectation that it can work. Hong Kong is very specific and the situation is rather unique and the producers may not want to invest too much on research and development and come up with a product that suits Hong Kong. I think we should do, say, invitation of proposal from producers around the world and try to come up with a proposal and then you should then convince us to provide the funding. It seems that you have put the cart before the horse. Ms Lai. As for SCRs, SCR technology is a matured technology. This is not the first time Hong Kong is going to use it. In London, in Brussels, in Barcelona, they have already fitted their buses with SCR devices. This is just new to Hong Kong, but not to other places. And we have already done a one-year trial. The bus companies want to get suitable converter suppliers. We are not going to do R and D. We want to get qualified suppliers to provide with solutions and fit the buses of six models and then for a year and then we'll decide on the purchase. Mr Chan, your time is up. You need to wait in the second round.
I don't support the proposal, Madam Chairman. Mr Kowai Kung. Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Bureau proposes to use SCR devices to improve air quality. We welcome that as an ordinary citizen.
I have several questions. In the past, the Bureau put emphasis on the user pays principle. But in the paper, we can only see that the government pays and people will have to bear with the increase in fares. Now, what is the responsibility of the company, the bus companies? They will increase manpower, they will add urea. And the administration says that all the increase in cost will be reflected in fares. So at the end of the day, the passengers pay instead of the bus companies. The bus companies are making money. What have they paid in this project? The second question is about the maintenance of the SCRDs. How are you going to supervise that? The bus companies consider these devices as gifts. They do not have the incentive to ensure the devices will last long enough. Say, if they do not maintain the devices well, then a device with a serviceable life of five years may end up just last for three years. And do you just leave the bus companies to decide whether they are going to replace the devices or not? And if they replace the devices, would that not be reflected in the fares? Since there is a need to fit these devices, should the bus companies be prevented from passing on? should the bus companies be prevented from passing on the cost of the SDRs or the maintenance cost of the SCRs to the passengers? Now, these SCR devices will have to be disposed of after the end of its usable life. And these devices are made of metal. And if the metal is sold, when the devices are scrapped, there will be a revenue and will that be reflected in the fare as well? I'll answer part of the questions and then other colleagues will supplement. We think the SCR technology is a mature technology because new buses have already got this device. In overseas countries, they do retrofit such devices to old buses. They all want to reduce emission. As for the difference in cost and how the cost is to be shared. In discussing with the bus companies, they will try to absorb some of the costs. My colleague will supplement in this regard. Yeah, after the devices have been retrofitted, would the bus companies just consider these as gifts and will not well maintain the devices? Now, you don't need to worry because the device is fitted to their buses and the device is able to reduce emissions. So you don't need to worry about maintenance and operation. If they don't maintain the device well, that will affect the bus. Mr. Mo. Because, oh, Mr. Li first. The bus companies are very anxious about maintaining the devices because they are, since they are very anxious about it. Excuse me. How can you say that they will be anxious about while maintaining the device? Would they be penalized according to the law? I'm not quite confident about any voluntary system. The device is fitted to the buses of the companies. And if the devices do not, are not well maintained, then the buses will have to be maintained more regularly or more often. Tan Kapiu, I want to ask about the details. Now, the buses will retire by about twenty nineteen to twenty twenty six. That will take about ten years for the buses to retire. And the supplier will only provide four years of warranty. And after four years, who is to pay for the maintenance or warranty? Is it to be paid by the bus companies? Paragraph fifteen. It said that it will increase the use of urea and fuel. What is implication on cost in percentage terms? Say, when you go to the finance committee, provide us the numbers on the increase in cost as a result. Miss Li, thank you for the question concerning the warranty. SCR devices can be used for five to six years. To make sure that the devices are used in the optimal condition, we require the supplier to give four-year warranty. This is to maintain the device at top condition. Now, in the fifth or sixth year, if the device no longer works, then the replacement costs will be paid by the bus company. Therefore, in paragraph sixteen, we say that the two bus companies expect that the increase in cost will be one three one million and ninety million respectively. This includes the increase in fuel, increase in urea cost, and also the replacement cost. The government's subsidy is for the first fitting. Now, the warranty will last for four years. And after four years, the bus company will have to get an other supplier to do the maintenance. And then the bus may have to be put in the depot for two, for two years because, before scrapping. Because they will have, otherwise, they will have to replace the device. How can you make sure that they do replace the device? Mr. Mo. You are concerned that if the device has expired, its lifespan, what will we, what should we do next? In fact, for new buses, the device is already there. We are just adding the device to old buses. So the issue is how the transport department is going to supervise the maintenance of buses. Even for new buses, there are SCR devices. The transport department is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the buses. It's not that we just allow the bus companies to put their buses in the depot without using them if the device, or the devices have failed. If the devices have failed, that will affect the usage rate of the buses. And the transport department looks at the usage rate of the buses or looks at the deployment rate of buses. They can't just hide the buses. The bus companies cannot just hide the buses and don't deploy these buses. Now, this council has discussed this problem. There are about three thousand buses of Euro mark two and Euro mark three. And they are polluting buses. And we have to wait until they are scrapped in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty six. With the SCR devices, we can reduce emission by these buses. Mr. Ho.
Yes, just a moment. Just now, Mr. Chen Heng-Pang has raised his hand.
And I said that the discussion of this agenda item will last until forty five. And I still have Mr. Ho, Chen Heng-Pang, and myself. So I'll make it four minutes for the three of us. And then second round, Quo Wei-Kang, two minutes. I have to draw a line here. Mr. Tony Ho, I'll be brief in my answer then, question then. Well, my question may be similar to what two other members have already asked. We will be installing a number of SCRDs. I am not familiar with its working. Now, after they have finished their lifespan, what are we going to do with them? Will they create another kind of pollution problem? We might have to involve extra resources in handling them. In page five and six, it says that there are six bus models which are on trial and that represent fifty-eight percent of the Euro two and Euro three buses. And in appendix one, there are three thousand eight hundred Euro two and Euro three buses. And if I multiply it by fifty-eight percent, and that doesn't amount to two thousand four hundred. So in annex B, how do you come up with the number two thousand in there? Does it mean that the other models are not appropriate for the retrofitting work? Does it mean that they are not being utilized at the moment and they are just there to stand by? Thank you, Mr. Ho, for your question. The SCRDs will be purchased by the government using public funds. And then after that, they will become properties of the bus companies. And after they have expired their lifespan, the bus companies have the duty to dispose of them according to our requirements. While in fact, the bus companies do have other parts related to buses and that have to be disposed of in accordance with EBD's requirements. So my question is similar to Mr. Quo's, Wei-Kang's question. And how do you ensure that the bus companies will replace SCRDs when the time comes? Or do they just, you allow them to just to take them out? Now, for SCRD, there is no, not a definite deadline by which they should be replaced. Generally, they can be used for five to six years. And during the course of their usage, the bus companies will look at their catalytic functions. And if they are found not to be functioning, then they have to be replaced. So the same goes to the other mechanical parts as well. And also, on a day-to-day basis, they have to carry out repair and maintenance work, just like any other parts of a bus. And they have to do that in accordance with the supplier's instructions. Now, TD, we, at TD, we do have colleagues to monitor bus companies' repair and maintenance works. So we are going to monitor them. Mr. Ho talked about the number on annex B. Why is there a difference in the number? Because some buses, there isn't sufficient room to retrofit the SCRDs. And also, in other cases, there are buses which have a less lifespan. So we do not include them in the retrofitting exercise. So hence, the difference in the figures. So we are left with one thousand three hundred and eighty-four buses, which are found suitable for the retrofitting work. Mr. Chen Heng-Pang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The paper says that the Euro two and Euro three buses would retire by twenty nineteen and twenty, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty six respectively. So some buses still have a very long lifespan. And SCRDs do have a lifespan too and the functions may get less as time goes by. If, well, we are very worried about how you monitor the bus companies to make sure that the SCRDs are working effectively. How do you monitor the bus companies to ensure that the SCRDs are functioning effectively to reduce emissions? What kind of framework will you be putting in to monitor them? Spot checks or random checks on the road or what? How can you ensure that the bus companies can properly use the SCRDs? Now, if the SCRDs are not used properly, will there be a penalty? As what some of the members asked. I don't see the administration giving a direct reply to us on that point. Can you respond to us on that point? And, well, some questions are not answered. Perhaps we can, we should go back and gather more information before we can respond to your question. When SCRDs do not function anymore, what will we do to them? That's number one. And some colleagues also pointed out that, actually, the monitoring of the working of SCRDs will be part of our ongoing monitoring of the bus companies' work. Now, if a bus is going to retire in eighteen years' time, and when it retires, what will we do to the SCR? Because the SCR has already become part of the bus. Mr. Mo. Perhaps I will try to explain further. Now, if the SCRDs do not function anymore or they will stay there and the bus can still go on operating. And this is what members are concerned about. And is it the case that the bus companies can go on doing nothing? Now, if SCRDs do not function anymore, the catalytic function will go out. And if the bus company doesn't take up timely maintenance repair work, then the bus will not be able to operate smoothly. Now, if there is no penalty on bus companies, the bus companies might just well take it out altogether. I would really like to know whether there are any spot checks or any penalties. Now, bus companies do maintain maintenance records. And this is something that the TD colleagues will keep a close eye on. I will check and will inspect the buses and will take a look at the maintenance records. Well, apart from the maintenance records, will you be, actually be going to check on the buses? Yes, the buses will be checked. What about the penalty?
Madam Chair, how does the transport department monitor the repair and maintenance of buses? Perhaps we can talk further with TD and we can gather more information for members' reference before we take out, present the proposal to the finance committee. Now, it's my turn. On the penalty. Well, don't tell us that you would consider us when you are, the penalty, when you are renewing the license. I'm sure that you have all sorts of considerations in renewing the license of bus franchises. But please pay attention to the members' concern. Now, annex A and B. Euro one, two, and three buses altogether for the over four thousand buses. But then in annex B, excluding the Euro one buses, four hundred and seven hundred and forty-nine, and there are altogether two thousand and four Euro two and Euro three buses. And we are carrying out the retrofitting work in one thousand and three, four thousand, one thousand, one thousand four hundred buses. And then there are, say, some two, three thousand buses which are left unattended. What are we going to do to them? Are they left there just to retire naturally? Well, annex A, we have together five thousand seven hundred buses, Euro one buses, four hundred and seven hundred and forty-nine buses, and they will retire by twenty fifteen. So we'll do nothing to them. And then Euro two and three buses will be our focus, three thousand eight hundred or so in number, as what my colleague explained. Two thousand are not retrofitted, but one thousand four hundred will be retrofitted. And that's because the Auto Commission has completed a value-for-money study on roadside pollution and has also considered our retrofitting work. And the Auto Commission is very worried that the bus, after it has been retrofitted with SCR, will retire in a, say, in a few months' time. So our consideration is that, well, the bus should have at least two years' lifespan after the retrofitting work. So using that criterion, we have ruled out buses which have a span, lifespan of two years after the retrofitting work. That would be ruled out. And for some two hundred and eighty buses, there isn't sufficient room for retrofitting the SCRDs. And for some four hundred buses, because the number in each model is quite few. So we think that we should focus on the six models, which are greater in number. And we'll try to focus on the, on these bus models first. So that's why we come up with the one for, one thousand four hundred buses to be retrofitted. Now, for the several hundred buses, which are smaller in number in terms of the model, would you consider asking the bus companies to let them run on less? would you consider asking the bus companies to let them run on less busy routes? Well, we don't, we haven't considered that. But we have made an agreement with the TD which will achieve a similar effect. And that is, we have an agreement with the TD and the bus companies. And that is, we will establish low emission zones in Central, Mongkong, and Khorwe Bay. And our agreement with the bus companies is that with the retrofitting work in progress, and since starting from 2015, only buses with emission standards comparable to Euro IV buses will be allowed to run in these low emission control zones. So that's how we try to achieve our emission reduction target. Mr. Kwok Wei Kung? Well, the administration hasn't been clear on the bus company's duty in terms of committing resources. Well, it seems that we are giving away freely too much just for the sake of environmental protection. The administration must answer me. The impact of the, say, the purchase of urea solution, maintenance, and repair costs, how will it affect the bus fares? And if the bus companies are going to shoulder all these costs, can we ask the bus companies not to pass on the costs to the passengers? They should shoulder all the costs by themselves. Who to tackle that? Now, on the finance and the costs, the division between the government and the bus company is very clear. The public money will be used to fund the purchase of the SCRDs for the first time on a one-off basis. Now, for the repair and maintenance of the SCRDs and beyond, say, the warranty period, and also for the replacement of SCRDs and for the extra fuel costs and the urea solution costs, that will have to be borne by the bus companies. Those will form part of the bus company's operating costs. And operating costs is one of the six factors the government considers in bus companies' applications for fare adjustment. So will that, will the retrofitting of SCRDs drive up the bus fares? I think it's too early to say. Well, can you make an assessment? Well, I think the impact will be slight. Well, let me cite an example, KMB. After the retrofitting work in the, is, 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 1,100 buses and in the next ten years, it will involve an extra cost of $1.3 billion, and it's just $10 million per year. And compared to the overall annual operating expenditure of $5 billion of that company, then it's just a very small percentage. I don't think it will have a major impact on the bus fares. Well, please, Madam Chair, can they be asked to provide further information after the meeting? All right, time's up. If your, if our most questions go unanswered, please, administration, give us a paper before you take the funding proposal to the FC.
And I have to ask members on this question. When we deal with an application for funding at the panel level, I do ask members whether you support recommending the proposal to the FC. So I put a question to you here. Those in favor of putting the paper before FC, please raise your hands. It will be discussed at the FC. You support bringing the paper or putting the paper before the FC? I see four hands, four members, five. Those against? I think it is premature. So please record, make a record. Mr. Albert Chan is against the proposal, and the others are in favor. We move on to the next item. And that is controlling the impact of dumping and dredging activities on marine environment. Paper CB11269, Code 13, Bracket 03. Let us wait for the officials.
There are only four documents.
And there is also Paper Bracket 04, which is a background brief prepared by the Legco Secretariat. We have Ms. Christine Lo, the Undersecretary for the Environment, Mr. David Wong, Assistant Director, EPD, Environmental Compliance, Ms. Amy Yun, Assistant Director of EPD, Water Policy, Ms. Peter Moak, Chief Engineer, Field Management of the CEDD. The officials are not so familiar to us because we seldom discuss this topic. I'll ask the officials to speak on this topic with the aid of a PowerPoint, a PowerPoint presentation. Yes, who is to start? Yes, Mr. Moak, please. Thank you, Madam Chairman and members. Now, please do not read every word of the PowerPoint. It will be brief. Yes, just let me briefly say something on our work. The CEDD is responsible for managing the dumping grounds for marine mud. As for non, uncontaminated sediment, there are three such areas. South of Changchau, one is east of Nine Pin Island and east of Tonglongchau. These dumping grounds for uncontaminated sediment has been used for more than twenty or thirty years. I will speak in particular on the management of contaminated sediment, the dumping ground for contaminated sediment. It's mainly to the north of Chuklabkot Airport and to the east of Sajchau. This is a confined marine disposal area. It was set up in 1992, more than twenty years ago. There were five phases of works, and we are now in Phase Five, marking green. Last year, with the support of this council, and we obtained funding, is rather south of the Brothers Islands, we started our work on digging a pit, on digging pits, and these pits will accommodate the contaminated sediments. As for the pit management, we will dig up a pit from the seabed. I try to be brief. We've heard it many times before. But there are new members, Mr. Chan. Please give some time to the new members. This is background information. Please don't waste our time, it's in the paper. I don't understand why we need such a presentation, it's in the paper. What's the point? Mr. Chan, I can't guarantee that every member have read, has read the paper before the meeting, it's quite common. Now, I'll try to be brief. Now, the disposal vessels will dump the mud at the pit. And then it will stop at about three meters from the area. And then we will cover this with uncontaminated sediment so as to reinstate the seabed, reinstate the original seabed. Now, this is our management arrangement, near to the pit. We have a vessel stationed there for 24 hours. When a barge is going to dump contaminated mud, a report has to be made, and an engine has to be switched off. And according to water current, the barge is drifted to the designated area for dumping the contaminated mud. And then after dumping, then the barge will be drifted by water outside the pit. And then the barge will then be towed away. We monitor that very closely, and we do several things in terms of monitoring. We do water quality monitoring. We take water quality samples to make sure that water quality will not be adversely affected because of the operation. We also take sediment samples. We try to find out whether there is any contaminated mud drifting from the pit. And we also take fish resources samples. We do trawling to collect samples twice a year. We look at the change in the catch, and we try to find out whether there is any contamination of target species. And after the capping, after the reinstatement of the seabed, we continue to monitor the situation and in particular, the recolonization by the benthic species. After, according to our observation, in the past twenty or so years, we have found that there is no unacceptable impact on water and sediment quality, and there is no unacceptable impact on fishery resources. And we'll continue to monitor the conditions. The Undersecretary, do you have anything to add? This is the first time in this term of the government that we speak on this topic. In preparing for this meeting, we want to tell you several things. This is also in response to the reasons for having this meeting. The briefing is very short. I hope Mr. Wong will speak a few words on another part in relation to this issue. Mr. Wong, in terms of regulation, there are two things. First, on dredging works, and second, on dumping. With regard to dredging, the control is under the EIAO. If it is a designated project or if they are designated works, then there is a need to conduct EIAO, and that is related to large-scale dredging or 500,000 cubic meters, or there are sensitive receivers nearby. You are familiar with that, and I will not speak on that. After the completion of the EIA, if an approval is given, and then a permit will be issued. The permit will list the abatement measures that have to be conducted during the work period. And during the work periods, there should also be environmental monitoring program to measure the actual impact and assess effectiveness of the mitigation measures. Under the permit, the environmental permit, we will list the mitigation measures. And these are the basic measures. We restrict the size of the dredging area. We will limit the overall dredging rate. We will limit the number of dredges and the type. And we require the use of silk curtains to confine the impact, just as it is shown in the diagram. And after dredging, there is dumping. This is controlled under the Dumping at Sea Ordinance. According to the ordinance, all disposal or dumping activities are subject to a permit to be obtained from the EPD. In 2012, the EPD issued about 150 such permits. 2011, 162, and then 143 in 2010, so is a range of 140, 160. And we monitor the operation of the vessels in the course of transportation and in the course of dumping. We'll make sure that they comply fully with the permit conditions. Since it is a marine activity, we have established a monitoring system. We monitor the location of the vessels in real time. We can monitor the routing as well as the dumping, loading, and dumping activities. Apart from tracking and monitoring, we also conduct checks on the activities of these contractors. In the past ten months, we conducted one inspection on each contractor, and we have not seen any breach at all. This is a set of photos showing to you the use of the GPS system. We collect, we identify the location of each vessel, and we work through the web cameras and other devices to monitor the dumping activity. And if they cheat, and if they don't, well, the chance of cheating has been substantially reduced because nearly everything is monitored. In fact, we have three topics. One is about marine sediment, the other is on dumping. We have already made a short description. And the Secretary has also asked us to speak on, the Secretariat has asked us to speak on marine refuse. We think marine refuse is different from the previous two topics. We have prepared a one-minute briefing. Ms. Yun will speak on this. My apologies, it's still Mr. Wong. Now concerning the clearance of marine refuse, four departments are responsible. Marine Department, the AFCD, the LCSD, and the AVHD.
Apart from collecting the marine refuse, the Marine Department also has a service to collect refuse from local vessels, inside-hiking shelters, and seagoing ships. And as to law enforcement, you can see from this PowerPoint that in addition to the several departments I mentioned, the police is also taking enforcement actions against marine littering or near-shore littering. The offender is liable to a fixed penalty notice at a fine of $1,500 and, or a fine of $10,000 to $50,000 and/or imprisonment for six months to one year upon conviction. In the first quarter of this year, the government, headed by the EPD, we have established a cross-department marine cleaning working group. In addition to enforcement work and collecting marine refuse, we hope to undertake some interdepartmental studies. We want to do more, say, analyzing the source of the refuse so that we have a better understanding how refuse or marine refuse is produced so that we can... so that we can do a better job in cleaning up the marine refuse. Another part of our work has to do with enhancing collaboration among government departments and to promote public awareness of keeping the shorelines clean. We will also work with NGOs and green groups to promote keeping clean the shorelines and the beaches. So much for my presentation. Thank you, Mr. Wong. Apart from Mr. Charles Mock, who has not raised his hand, so all the other members have raised their hands to speak. Seven members in total. I'm going to draw a line very soon. Five minutes each, the order. Albert Chan, Tony Ho, Lo Wei Kwok, Kowen Kwan, Christopher Cheung, Kowai Kang, and myself. Five minutes, Mr. Albert Chan. Madam Chair, five minutes. I have three questions. Not enough time, Madam Chair. About about the dumping of sediments. The question has been with us for over two decades. And in the nineties, the fishermen found that there was illegal dumping. And the fishermen complained to the Marine Department and the AFCD. And then the government suddenly realized that this is happening. But then the sediment has been, well, a large volume of sediment had been deposited in the area between the Lama Island and the Changchau. So that happened twenty years ago. And then the government said that it has placed GPS devices on vessels and will strengthen, have stepped up regulations on them. Well, I thought the government is presenting us with revised legislation to tighten up the legislation or even to take out criminal prosecutions on those illegal dumping activities. I really hope that through tightening the legislation and through imposing a heavier penalty to resolve the problem. Second, I remember that in the reclamation of Penny's Bay, it seems that the area was very open. The contract said that the dumping contractors should install a double fence or double net to fence off the dumping ground. But then we found that the fence was broken, and then the sediments were drifted away. And then we, together with the fishermen complaint to the relevant government departments, then, and then the sediments drifted together with the water current to the fish breeding grounds. And there were a lot of disputes on that. But then the administration said that there was no problem upon inspection. But every time, there was a time lag of twelve hours from the complaint time and the time of the inspection. So there was this time gap. When the government arrived at the scene to inspect, then the sediment in the fishing, in the fish breeding ground had already drifted away. So the administration always said that there was no evidence to show that there was illegal activities. And the fishermen never got compensated. And these are the, the stories that we've heard repeatedly over the years. Now about marine refuse. We went to Chima Wan to pick up the litter. There were so much refuse. And there were syringes. And we don't know whether the syringes had HIV virus still there. And people, the drug abusers, sort of took drugs in the syringes and then threw away the syringes. And there was so much refuse in Lama Island, south of Lantau. And all the non-gazette beaches. There are the polystyrene foam boxers and the wrappings of the instant noodles and so on. Well, the, all these places were filled with litter. And it seems the government is not aware of this problem, and Seta is still going to make studies. I've actually written to the government departments many times. But in fact, I didn't know who to write to within the administration. Please specify a certain department to clear the beaches, the non-gazetta beaches. And don't just say that four departments are going to work together. We shouldn't just count on the green groups and the volunteers to clear up the refuse on the beaches. Well, three questions from myself. I just don't have enough time to voice my concerns. All right, Pass, I'll tackle the last question first. I don't deny that there is a lot of litter on the foreshores, coastlines, and the beaches. And I think a lot of the refuse comes from the land areas. And we are working together with district residents groups and the green groups to collect the, or to clear the refuse. I think we are tackling the problem head-on. And we need to work together within the various government departments. If you say that the volunteers are helping you to resolve the problem, please sack all the employees and delegate the work to, to sack the civil servants and delegate the work to the volunteers. Well, fishermen don't want dredging and dumping work at sea. At the AFCD, we met with government officials. They have this principle that the marine refuse will be tackled on the sea and land refuse will be tackled on land. I think the government should reconsider this on a long-term basis. And you have to, say, dig a pit for dred, for dredging. And then that is going to affect the marine life. And then after that is failed, you're going to dig another pit. And that's going to affect the marine life. Would you, on the long term, consider new technologies? And Tom Choi, then it will tackle the contaminated sediment. Would the government think of other alternatives? The, for the open, both the open sea and the confined marine disposal facilities have an impact on marine life. A lot of people don't know the distinction between these two types of facilities and what their impact on the marine life is. Can, perhaps the government can share the information with us later on. Earlier on, I was out at the sea at the Tongchong. The silk curtain, when it has been installed and taken away, and it is being disposed of randomly. And it will affect the safety of the ship navigation and will also affect the fishermen. Also, for any marine projects, you have a sort of compassionate compensation for fishermen or express compensation. But the works have been going on for some time, but the fishermen have not been compensated long after the works have commenced. No wonder the fishermen have a lot of grievances. Well, for any projects that you undertake, please deal with the fishermen's compensation first. Well, it's, the fishermen's, actually, they don't want that compensation at all. They don't want you to undertake any works, actually. And also, I was looking at the work of the Hong Kong Macau Bridge Working Group. They take water samples once every week. And if the fishery is affected in any way, they are not there in time to make inspection on site. And because of this time lag, the, the administration doesn't have enough accurate information. So I hope that the administration can talk more with the fishermen on the impact of the various work projects. I just want to say one thing. Mr. Ho, you will spend a lot more time actually doing site visits. So if you identify any malpractices, please take a photo for us, and that will help us in following up on such malpractices. Mr. Mock, other, disposal of the sediment. Thank you, Mr. Ho, for your question. Mr. Ho, on other occasions has met with us. And he's very concerned about the dumping work at sea. And he has actually went out, gone out with the fishermen to see how we're doing on marine projects. Mr. Ho mentioned whether the mud pits are a sustainable solution. We understand that the mud pits have been here for twenty years. Can that survive till another twenty, for another twenty years? All right, if we can build land-laid islands, can we use that as a solution? We can fix the mud there and it will not drift around to prevent it from drifting around? We would also be looking into other new technologies. But for the moment, I don't think it's appropriate for us to discuss the new technologies here. Mr. Ho also suggested, or raised the point about the difference between the open and confined facility. Now, open facility, open sea facility, is really for uncontaminated sediment. It doesn't contain heavy metals or toxic organic substances. So in dumping, the pit can be, or the pit can be dug out in nearshore areas. But if the sediments contain contaminants, we would be worried that the contaminants will drift together with the water current to fish fishing grounds or fish farms. So we would choose the location of the pits to be at locations where the water current is relatively slow. And then the contaminated sediments will be put at the very bottom of the pit. And then we'll cap it with a uncontaminated sediments at the top to prevent the contaminants from drifting around together with the water flow. Mr. Lo Wei Kwok.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In Appendix Five, I noticed the environmental monitoring results around east of Shaqiao. From 2007 to 2012, the results seem to be very satisfactory, including the dissolved oxygen levels, and the trends are good. And also the fish catch, and the mass of fish catch have also been on the rise. Now, in paragraph eighteen of the PowerPoint presentation, the marine water quality of the northwestern water control zone seems to be going in the other direction. In 2011, 2012, the compliance rate remains at seventy-two percent. But then compared to 2009, it's ninety-four point four percent. There is a big difference there. But then, no indicator is given here as to what is a good percentage. And you just say that is just seventy-two percent compliance. It seems that on page eighteen of the water, of the PowerPoint presentation, the, it seems that the water quality is declining in the past several years, although in 2011, 12, it has stabilized somehow. Now, in the paper, you also said that there is an EIA needed, and EP is needed. So I'm not worried on that front.
Such projects are monitored easily by the department. But my concern is about projects that don't require any EIA. And I'm worried about that. As for prosecution, you told us that there were, there was no breach. So is it because of too few inspections? Or is there any fault within inspection methods? Is the monitoring effective? Or is the situation really so desirable or satisfactory? Ms. Yun.
Thank you, Chairman. I will speak on the water quality numbers. Concerning the details in the paper, they are in relation to the monitoring of the situation in east Shaqiao. The emphasis is put on dissolved oxygen and suspended solids. As for the last slide, it is the data obtained from the monitoring stations in the open waters. The data in east Shaqiao, near east Shaqiao, are for reference. There is also the figure of non-organic nitrogen. It is not a very important, it is a number that is not shown. There is no change in, no significant change in this regard, but it is not related to the operation of east Shaqiao. It's only reflected in the northwestern control zone. There is no deterioration in water quality of near east Shaqiao.
Ms. Lo, I'm concerned about the overall water quality. As for east Shaqiao, concerning the confined dumping facility, I think you have put in much effort, and the situation is quite good. But as for the northwestern water control zone, there is a significant decline in water quality in comparison to 2009. This may be, may belong to a broader topic. Can you explain that? Concerning, we have asked for that. Correct me if I'm wrong. Can I finish with a short sentence? When we do dumping in the area, we need to test how the project affects the water quality. That is one set of numbers. And then the EPD, Ms. Yun, looks at the water quality of the water body. So there are two sets of data. One is the set of data near the project site, and the other is the general situation. And the two sets of data are released to the public. What about prosecution? Sorry, speaker isn't coming through. Mr. Ho. Some member, a member who has indicated to, who has indicated he wants to ask question has already left. So we have a little bit of time for wrapping up. I hope they can provide us more information. Concerning the monitoring station, you give us data, but I don't know how far the monitoring station is away from the project site. Mr. Kwok.
Par six. We are told the acceptable level. If we look at the technical memorandum, is there any description of what is meant by acceptable level? I have not found it in the technical memorandum. Can you tell us where the, what is meant by acceptable level? Is it in the technical memorandum? Thank you for the question. We don't have information in hand. My understanding is that if a project requires EIA, then the proponent has to
then the proponent has to conduct the EIA. Now, in your paper, 6C and 6D, you mention acceptable levels. Say for air quality, the chairman knows that there is an A Q O, or there are A Q Os. And the A Q Os represent the acceptable levels, or otherwise. In your technical memorandum, do you spell out what is meant by acceptable levels? We can provide the specifics after the meeting. And that is very important. Otherwise, how do we know? The situation is being monitored. I know you spent a lot of time on drawing up the paper, but certain information is very important. Several members have asked the same question concerning the EIA reports. Is there any follow-up? And whether the impact on fishery has been fully assessed? And whether the impact is acceptable or not? This is really unclear. So is it time that we should look at the study brief or the technical memorandum? If there is anything missing, shouldn't you update the technical memorandum so that the study can reflect what is the impact on the ecology? We fully understand his question. We can explain that, but probably, we have not prepared well in this regard to answer the question. Mr. Ko Wai Kwok.
Thank you, Chairman. According to the PowerPoint, one major dumping ground is the area east of Shaqiao. This is also an area where the Chinese white dolphins are rather active. The dumping is in a confined area. But the contaminated mud brought there, brought there by barges. And that the route, or the voyage of voyages of these barges may affect the Chinese white dolphins. Are there any measures to make sure that marine ecology is protected, in particular, rare species are protected? Ms. Yu, or who else? Ms. Yu.
I think it's already exceeded the scope of water quality. We've already said that projects may involve EIA's. And the EIA's look at the works period and also the operation of the project. And the impacts on species will be considered. But as for the specifics, there aren't too many white dolphins near east Shaqiao. When we did the dumping facility, we had EIA study. There were sightings of white dolphins, but the area is not a major habitat of the Chinese white dolphins. Now, the dumping facility has been operating for years. We looked at each pit. We used clean sediments to cover the pits. The recolonization by benthic species takes about one year or so. The crabs, shellfish, shrimps will recolonize the seabed in about a year. Every one year or so, we conduct a fishing, a fishery resources survey. And we discover that the catch and also the mix of species caught have not changed substantially in the area. And the impact on the food chain for white dolphins have not, have not changed significantly. It doesn't mean that I don't care about the life of the Chinese white dolphins. But would the speed of the barges be limited? Will the routing of such barges be limited or restricted? As for the water quality of the northwest water control zone, the compliance rate has been declining from 95% 2009 to 70 odd percent in 2012. It is declining. Do you set any standard for that? It seems that you are not worried about the deterioration in water quality. Is there any way to improve the water quality if not just preventing it from going down? Ms. Yu.
Let me explain further on water quality, and in particular, the last slide. Now, the compliance rate has declined from 90 odd percent to 70 odd percent. There are different numbers. Dissolved oxygen average, death average, and also the sea bottom, the dissolved oxygen, and also the nitrogen, etc., inorganic nitrogen, etc. And the main problem is with inorganic nitrogen in the western part of waters because of the impact of the Pearl River. And also, that is the increase in our population in the western part of Lantau and also in Mawan. As a result, the level of inorganic nitrogen has increased. But is the, has the level increased substantially? In fact, on the whole, when we, in the past, we were able to reach the compliance rate. But because of change in population and also change, and also climatic changes, there is the breaches. Now, we have the sewage treatment works in Taichung Co, which will help to improve the situation in respect of inorganic nitrogen.
About the total inorganic nitrogen, how it affects the water quality? It is a kind of nutrient, and it has to do with the life, marine life. Now, in the water, marine environment, the living organisms need a certain level of total inorganic nitrogen. But if there is too much, then red tide will appear. Now, in the past several years, in the northwestern part of Hong Kong, in the past couple of years, there is only one time when there was red tide. So the compliance rate was not satisfactory, but is not particularly poor. We'll pay special attention to it. So because we, members have abided by the time rule, we still have some time left. There is a second round. Mr. Lo Wai Kwok and Mr. Wu Chi Wei also wants to ask a question. So two members in the first round, and Mr. Lo Wai Kwok in second round. Mr. Wu Chi Wei. Madam Chair, my question will be simple. In the management of sediment, apart from using mud pits to cover them up, are there any alternative solutions? In Kaolin Bay, when we want to dispose of our sediment, we have come up with various proposals, including adding in organic elements to dissolve the contaminants in the sediment. So apart from covering up the sediments, are there any technologies which can help lessen the toxicity, toxicity of the mud pits? Can the toxicity level of the mud pits be reduced over time? I know that the benthic organisms will recon, colonize the mud pits. When they do that, will they be absorbing the toxic contaminants? Mr. Mark. Mr. Wu's question is a very good one. In Kai Tak or in Shang Mun River, the way we're doing it is like this. We are targeting the organic contaminants. And actually, a lot of the sediments we are dealing with contains heavy metals. And we might not be able to tackle it in a bio methodology. So we use this confined approach. For heavy metals, we can't, say, add in the concrete to solidify it. And if we do that, we will run into bigger problems. So we are staying put with a confined facility approach. And Mr. Wu is also concerned about whether the contaminants will seep into other levels and will be absorbed by the living organisms. So we are also very concerned about that. So we are covering the contaminated sediments with a clean mud with a layer of three meters thick so that the living organisms will not be in touch with the contaminants at the very low level. What can you clarify further? Now, in the process, you will dig a pit, and then you will put the contaminated sediments there. And then afterwards, you will put in some clean sediments to cap it, right? Yes, that's the way we're doing it. The size of the pit may be in several hectares. And then after digging the pit, we will, the pit will receive some contaminated sediments. That, we will be monitoring the whole process to ensure that there is a capping level of a three meters thick. So in digging, in the process of digging up, would there still be benthic organizations, organisms still living in the very bottom? And then they will enter the food chain later on? Well, actually, we have conducted a fisheries resources survey. And near the pit, we would do some fish trolling. And we would take samples of benthic organisms and fish to see whether their body have absorbed any contaminants. And so far, no problem has been found. In other words, the contaminated sediments deposited at the bottom of the pit will not be drifting away to a distance, say, 200 or 300 meters from the pit. Would there be living organisms still living at the bottom of the pit? Well, that would not be the case because these organisms would have migrated to other areas when we're digging the pit. So can the, can the, are the living organisms or fish near the pit still edible? Yes, the fishermen are still fishing around the pit. Well, I want to ask a question about the marine refuse. Every time when a typhoon has passed by Hong Kong, and some vessels have leaked oil into the sea, and some containers have actually fallen onto the water. And then, there were, was an incident where foam pellets have been deposited onto the water. And Hong Kong residents are very good. They volunteer to pick up the foam pellets on the beaches. Now, as far as legislation is concerned, how are we dealing with these sources of pollutants? Can we try to identify the ship owner or the insurance insurers to hold them responsible and ask them to take remedial actions to clean up the pollutants? And how is the legislation like in this aspect? Now, have you actually arrested the ship owner responsible for the foam pellet incident last time? Ms. Yu. Let's try to make a distinction between rubbish or refuse or goods. Now, if goods fall into the sea, the ship owner is duty-bound to notify the marine department. As for the incident last year on foam pellets, it involves various pieces of legislation. And we're still negotiating with the ship owners on the total costs involved in cleaning up the foam pellets. And the marine department is closely following up on the matter. And the negotiation is still underway. Is it the negotiation on the costs to be recovered or on the liability aspect? And the focus maybe in the negotiation is on the costs. And if the costs are found to be reasonable, we should have sufficient evidence to make a prosecution. My question is on whether we have sufficient legislative provisions to catch the ship owners or the insurance and hold them responsible. I think the compensation amount is a separate matter. If we do have the legislation, we can take them to court. Do we have sufficient legislation in that regard? Well, using the foam pellets incident as an example, is sufficient legislation in place for that kind of situation? Well, we know who the ship, the goods owner is or the shipper is. And I think sufficient legislation is in place. Now, as for the negotiation process, I'm not prepared well enough to tackle that question. If we want to discuss this particular topic or the progress of cleaning up marine refuse, perhaps we can have a special meeting of the EIA panel after the summer recess to discuss that topic. Well, say for the foam pellet incident last time or leakage of oil, apart from costs have to be involved in cleaning up the refuse, it is going to do a lot of damage to the ecology and the environment. And I hope that the legislation can also give protection to protecting the marine environment. And we are not just talking about recovering the costs of the cleanup. And we want to involve them as soon as we can to participate in the cleaning up process. If the ship companies can employ people to clean up, then that would be best. I don't want to comment on that particular incident. Let's look at the general picture. The first thing. Something has fallen into the sea, and people reacted very quickly. And that incident tells us that we have very good cooperation among the residents, the shippers, and the government. We're not trying to shy away from our responsibility and delegating or dodging our responsibility and just counting on the community to do the work. And we, actually, we, the three parties all reacted very quickly. Well, if members are interested in analyzing this... Well, if members are interested in analyzing the situation further, we can find another opportunity to do so. Now, Mr. Lo, why clock? Two minutes for you. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the screen, there's this PowerPoint presentation. And it's 5 lays out the results of the environmental monitoring at east of Shaqiao. But then the PowerPoint presentation is more representative. It talks about the water quality of northwestern water control zone. Perhaps today is not a good occasion for detailed explanations on the two... the differences of the two places. Can I ask that a paper be given later on on the detailed figures or detailed indicators in relation to this water control zone? Why is it that the compliance rate has dropped?
I think that would help in planning for the future improvement work. And also, can you give us some plans on future improvement works? In my first round, I also asked about prosecutions and law enforcement. If we don't have time to tackle those two points, please list the... give an explanation in the paper. While I'm not worried about projects, designated projects under EIA, all the mitigation measures are listed out and it will be easy to follow up and monitor them. But for projects which are... don't have to undergo EIA, how is the administration monitor them? How is the monitoring them? And how going to go about your prosecution and law enforcement work?
Well, let me suggest this. Mr. Ho and Mr. Lo, why clock and myself have asked questions about legislation on our marine environment. Can I suggest that it will be made an outstanding item? And after the summer recess, we can deal with it independently, separately as an outstanding issue after the summers. Thank you, members, and thank you, government officials, for attending the meeting.